We have left executive session. We're back into open session. I'd like to begin tonight's open session, we usually do, with resident concerns. If any resident has a concern that is not addressed in the agenda, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Scott Smires, Central Street. One question I had was about, I think it was on the agenda, but then it's been continued, which is Discovery Way. It's my understanding there was a zoning board of appeals decision that had to be made, and it wasn't clear to me if that is coming up. I looked at it on the website, and I couldn't find it there a couple of weeks ago, but is it coming up?
Right.
When is it?
The hearing on Discovery Way is going to be continued at the request of the applicant until, let's see, we've got a date certain, is it the 21st of November?
But that's not what I'm at. I'm not talking about the zoning board of appeals. Is that, that seemed like a critical thing that you were talking about. When is that going to be?
December 6th.
All right, thank you. And that's like to say if it's a warehouse or not a warehouse? Okay, that'll be important. And then, speaking of the town website, at the last select board meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the announcement put on by the DEIC. Since then, the police investigation on the incident at the high school has concluded, according to the chief of police. I've emailed the select board asking them for an update on that. Is that going to happen tonight? And I don't want to talk about it if there's going to be a discussion about it already, but my point is, if you're not, is that, you know, the investigation is concluded by the police, the select board, town manager, whoever's the appropriate person should give us a complete update on that, and then update that announcement on the website. I think that's very important to get that accurate and not just put something up for the sake of putting something up. So I think that's something I'd like to hear about.
Thank you. So that item is not on the agenda for tonight. I can certainly speak with the town manager and see if an update would be appropriate at our next meeting on the 21st. But at this point, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, but I sent a message to the select board last week as soon as I got the information from the police, and I think it's reasonable, since it seems very important to get this information out to the public, that we do that as soon as possible. We know that they want, that the DEIC wants to get things on the, on the, on the town website as fast as possible without waiting for the investigation. So now that you have the results of the investigation, you should get that updated as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Schultz, 24 Bruce Wood Road. I'd like to speak for no more than three minutes about the 100 Discovery Way proposal. Is that okay?
Certainly can, but we're not going to be taking any action on that today.
I understand. Will my comments be part of the public record or no?
I would recommend that if you have specific comments, you follow up with an email to us so that we can make sure that gets into the public record. Obviously, all of this is being filmed right now.
That's fine. I just want to give you a quick update on what the Woods neighborhood has done.
Mr. Manager.
Just a clarification. The public hearing is being continued, and the public hearing is where comments like this would be recorded into the record. So if you're intending for something to be part of the public hearing record for the site plan review, I don't know that this would be an appropriate time to do it.
That's okay. I just want to speak to you as individuals, and I came here tonight to do that. Really quick, and I promise, quick update on what we've done. The whole neighborhood was late to wake up to the dangers posed by ESS boxes. We didn't really start to research it until we received the abutter letters. But now, the whole neighborhood is aware of the danger of an explosion, of, you know, fires, gas being distributed at very long distances. And so everybody's pitched in. They've reached into their pockets in our neighborhood. You know, we've got people in rental units a half a mile away, a mile away, you know, donating $100. We've got people donating $500. We have people donating $1,000. And we were able eventually to amass enough of a personal neighborhood legal fund to hire Dan Hill. I think you're all, you all know him, right? Anybody not know him? Anyhow, he's going to, he's been helping us make sure our filings are correct, and he's also going to represent us probably in certain circumstances. So we've been able to do that, is to get Dan Hill operating so he can, you know, help us in a totally legal and very experienced way. Beyond that, we had a great meeting with the Board of Health. I don't think they really understood before 30 of us showed up at their virtual meeting that, you know, just what kind of dangers these ESS boxes pose to life and property. But once they heard from us, and once they listened to Blue Wave Solar's presentation, they voted to continue, I think you probably all know. And they didn't put a timeframe on this continuance. They just said, we want Blue Wave Solar to answer more questions. I don't know what the questions were, but that was great, in our opinion, because it gave us some more time to muster our defense. Third, and the most important thing in my opinion, is that we filed a appeal with these Acton Zoning Board of Appeals, arguing that under no circumstances should an ESS ever be considered a warehouse. It is more like a electrical substation. In fact, it's very similar to an electrical substation, in which case it should be zoned as such. Nobody should just be reaching for the nearest use or code and saying, oh, it's a warehouse. I mean, you could call my house a warehouse if you wanted to. So we're going, I think we have a good chance of succeeding in that appeal. And then finally, I want to say we are going to win. We're going to win this. You have a huge number of very intelligent, very experienced people rising up now and insisting that this shouldn't happen. Why do we know? Because none of you, not one of you, would just sit down and accept the fact that these massive shipping container-sized boxes, full of hazardous materials that are highly flammable, would be placed only 150 feet away from your house. If that was going to happen in your neighborhood, you would fight it tooth and nail, just like we are. So we know this is going to win. So I'll see you on the 21st, but please keep in mind, the BOH has no time period for its continuance, and the Zoning Board of Appeals won't meet until December 6th. So I'm not sure what we're going to accomplish on November 21st. Thank you.
Thank you.
The end of year, Great Elm Way. Just wanted to let you all know that Madeline Cruz and I are organizing a healing prayer circle, not circle, a heart at probably the high school fields for healing prayers for Caesar Soto. And if you want more information, please contact me or Madeline Cruz. Thank you. It'll be Saturday night from 6:00 to 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hey, could I, for speaker online?
Our first speaker online is a call-in user. Maybe let us know who they are and where they're from.
Hi, this is Tara from Mass Safe, Tara from Mass Safe. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I was very excited to see the 68 Parker Street on the agenda under a potential purchase. I think that this would be a fantastic opportunity for the town to reserve naturally affordable housing units at lower no cost to the local taxpayers. We're seeing this over and over again around the state. My friends in Chelsea just finished doing a similar thing. The 76, 76 units, mostly very low income, with the state grants that are available and the tax credits that are available, buying this and deed restricting units and conveying it to a nonprofit so that it can own it and/or allow the tenants to actually own it using a tenant ownership model, I think would be a fantastic solution to, to affordable housing because it's not a, no matter how much you build, it's not going to end up lowering prices, as we found out. It's a matter of pricing. And so this is a way to capture the low prices existing now that are, you know, going to go up. But if, it's a great way to, to do the right thing by our community, by these families, 76 families, mostly low income, that have no place else to go. Please do it now, and please do it fast. And if you need help with that, I'm happy to help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online?
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Town manager update.
Thank you. Just two brief announcements. Thursday night, 7:00 PM, there'll be a virtual forum here, well, not here, but virtually for the Open Space and Recreation Plan. This is a project that is to look at the goals for open space and recreation for the community, and we renew it every five years. We're in the middle of doing that now. This is one step in the process, and we really love to have people attend the forum and provide input on some of the things that were responded in the survey that we did in the fall. And more to come on the Open Space and Recreation, but please, 7:00 PM, Thursday, virtually, the link is on the website. And the other thing I want to make sure people know is that on Veterans Day, which would be Friday at 11:00 AM, there'll be a ceremony on the common right out here. I hope you can attend.
Thank you. Member comments. Jim?
Couple things. I've been at a couple of meetings where, well, the town and the Housing Climate, the Housing Climate and Justice for Acton Group both got grants from Mass Safe to work on energy savings and bill savings. And they're taking slightly different approaches, but very, in a very complimentary way. And I wanted to just publicly thank Deegan Larkin, who's been, is, is working for the town just a very small number of hours a week, helping take up some of the, you know, the staffing that's missing with Andrea Becerra, our sustainability director out on leave. And she's just done a really great job at communicating both with HCJA and with those of us who are concerned about, you know, the sustainability aspects of, of changing the energy use and those, and those people that are just interested in just the simple pure justice aspects of it. I'm really excited to see these grants moving forward, and I just, I wanted to really appreciate Deegan's role in making them happen. The other piece, I wanted to make sure that people that have been following this saga of the trees in Kelly's Corner, that they are largely down now, but there were three very large oaks that were saved under the terms of the contract and were, and now are in the, in the possession of the town off, away from Kelly's Corner, so that we can have time to have a process for figuring out what, what to do with them. The notion being that if we can find a way to save them from just being chipped up and, you know, quickly, which quickly disperses any, any carbon sequestration, if we can find purposes in sculpture or furniture or, you know, other practical uses that keep the wood intact, that's a big win. So there'll be a process to figure that out once we get closer to figuring out how to do that. But I just want people to know, oh, the other piece about that was those, the, the, the two of the largest oak trees there, I'm no expert at counting rings, but I've done it before. They really look to me like they were 140-year-old trees. So they were, they were planted, you know, relatively soon after the Civil War and have been growing there ever since, and it's, I'm really pleased to see that they're not just being turned into sawdust. Thanks.
Thank you. David.
Good evening. Several people have asked if the DEIC would consider changing its statement in light of the police report. Well, first, I'd like to say that the police report was out before the DEIC composed its statement. And second, I don't understand why that would be the case. The DEIC statement expresses solidarity with and empathy, empathy for the innocent kids and their families that were involved in this incident. That's not affected by the police report. Thank you.
Fran.
I just have a quick, a couple of announcements. I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the joint meeting between Boxborough Acton, our finance committee, and the school committee met, was it last week? It's all seemed so far away. I really liked listening to the different entities' goals, and I'm hopeful that we can collaborate. I would love more collaboration between the towns, and I would enjoy that. And also, the human services committee met for the first time. We're getting our, we still have sea legs, but I'm excited for this committee to take off, and our next meeting is Thursday. We will be hybrid on Thursday, so I'm hoping to see faces, you know, virtually or in person.
Himajur.
Yes, just a friendly reminder that voting is tomorrow, so please vote if you haven't already. That's it for me.
Thank you. I've got a couple of points to make. At our last meeting, we talked a bit about tree protection bylaws and land clearing bylaws and consideration of those items. And this was initiated in part as a result of the citizens petitions at town meeting. I did meet with the design review board, who have sort of been more closely interested in this subject than any other board or committee representing the town. They are somewhat interested in tree protection bylaw, but they have some concerns about the town getting involved in regulating individual trees on private property. And they are somewhat more interested in looking at a larger-scale land clearing bylaw. So they will be continuing to look at that over the next few meetings. The other item that I've got is, last week, I attended the, a meeting of the executive committee of the Concord 2025 Committee. It was at the Concord Free Public Library. They had about 100 people in attendance. Obviously, they've, they've got a lot more of the infrastructure for the 250th than we do with, as we say, they, they provided the battlefield, we provided the Minutemen. And obviously, you know, the Concord Museum and all the other historic sites. So they're a bit ahead of us as far as getting the preps done. When you count up the number of people in the executive committee and then their subcommittees, they've got about 60 folks working on it. So it's going to be a pretty major effort. I was able to make some good contacts with the folks in Concord, and we'll continue a close relationship with them going forward. And that's it for me. So to read the notice of public hearing as amended, the Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on November 7th, 2022, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 at Town Hall, with 72 Main Street Acton, and virtually at actonma.gov/meeting/bos on the application of BWC Coles Brook LLC for a site plan special permit under zoning bylaw section 10.4 at 100 Discovery Way for an energy storage facility. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online and at Acton Town Hall, http dot acton dash ma dot gov slash ds web slash views slash collection dash 15376. And the petitioner has requested a revised extension until November 21st, 2022, at 7:10 PM. Could I have a motion to approve this request for an extension? Still moved? I have a second. Moved and seconded. All in favor of the request extension, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. Move on to new and special business, item four. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. This is one of the many initiatives that our economic development director, Julie Pierce, is working on. Some of you may know that Hartz Corporation recently celebrated its 100th anniversary, and we're asking the board to retroactively, I guess you could say, declare September 22nd, 2022, as Hartz Corporation Day in Acton. And in the packet, this evening was a draft proclamation stating that for the board to consider.
Thank you. Discussion. Would I have a motion?
I just wanted to say that a number of us have toured the Hartz factory in the past. It's very cool. They make fabrics for most car manufacturers, the vast, vast majority of them. So I just wanted to, you know, people, we all drive by there, and, you know, people may not know what goes on in there, but it's a, it's a very, very cool factory. Employs lots of people. They've been around for a long time, and they're kind of, their goal is to remain, you know, incognito there on Hayward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
One question I had, I don't know whether it's for John or for Julie. Is there a sense of, I think this is the, it's the first time in my memory we've had a proclamation for a company, and I'm wondering if there's a, if there's a general thought or policy about, you know, how we're going to go about this in the future, you know, we're going to reserve it for companies that have been here for 100 years or, or what? Wondering what, what the thought is.
Yeah, so thank you for that question. We did discuss that question over the last week or so, and I think it's something that we continue to work on. In general, I think what we're trying to do, and what Julie's taking the lead on, is trying to really celebrate successful businesses. We have many businesses and nonprofits in this community that saw big milestones this year. So it's, it's been pretty exciting, and we're just trying to find ways to recognize them, and we, we don't have a specific policy suggestion for you to consider tonight, but if there's any direction on how we should bring these forward going in the future, we'd be happy to hear it. Otherwise, we're going to continue to bring them forward and try to celebrate as many businesses as we can.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Yes, before I do the motion, I will observe that as a direct abutter to the Hartz property, I will recuse myself from voting on this particular motion. Go ahead, Jim.
I'd move that we accept this proclamation that sets September 22nd, 2022, as Hartz Corporation Day in Acton.
Do I have a second? David. I was just going to offer a friendly amendment rather than accept to issue, to issue the proclamation.
Sounds good. Let's issue a proclamation. Yeah, yeah, it sounds very official. It's like what select boards do. Yeah. Good.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Further discussion. All in favor of the amended motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Extension? Passed and approved. Thank you. Mr. Manager. The manager is my tech assistant here. Thank you. So one of the goals that we've, we approved actually not in July, but a year ago, was to establish a committee and begin looking at public works facility, improving and renovating and replacing potentially the existing public works facility. Committee was formed. The, and let's see, next slide, please. To evaluate the options for the reconstruction renovation DPW facilities located at 14 Forest Road, including the transfer station. Next slide. So there's our list of members. I was designated as committee chair. We did have representation from finance, green advisory board, town manager's office, public works director, obviously very interested in this process. And we did have some at-large members that represent a wide range of experience with such facilities and an interest in the political life of the town. Next slide, please. So during the process, we had eight public meetings. We did a tour of the present facility. We visited a really exceptional facility in Westford. We did extensive review of the Western Sampson Report done in 2021. We have had a joint meeting with Western Sampson within our committee, and then as well as a select board meeting. We accepted some really excellent public input from interested members of the public, which was all incorporated into our recommendation. Next slide, please. So these are the findings, and this report, which is available on the town website, was approved about three weeks ago by the entire DPW Facility Study Committee. Major points. We believe that we should remain on the present site. We believe that we should remain on the present site due to its central location in town, existing road network, fact that we've been on that site for well over 50 years and people have been used to us. And frankly, purchasing another site somewhere in town would be extremely expensive and frankly, very hard to find such a centralized location. Next slide. So what we hope to do as a committee in the, in the next few months and year is to get more members of the public down to the site to look at the existing conditions that our folks are working under. I think it was a real eye-opener for a lot of members of the committee that toured the site. And certainly, we had representatives from the select board there as well, plus finance committee. Present facility is undersized, inadequate, not in good condition. It was undersized in 1969 when it was built. It was cut back by 30% in size. There was, we've got a published report from the Acton Beacon, said that there was speculation amongst the committee at that point that the building would prove to be inadequate before the initial bonds were paid off. So we got our warning 50 years ago that we were in bad shape. The Western Sampson Report, which is also available, it's probably 150 pages, goes in great detail with all of the problems of the existing building and really the impracticality of attempting to retrofit it. Next slide, please. So, and sorts of problems we have. Indoor air quality, fire safety. The building is unreinforced concrete masonry. We had a study done probably 25 years ago of the existing public buildings in town. And in any kind of a seismic event, most likely that would be one of the first buildings to collapse, taking out not only the people, but literally millions of dollars' worth of equipment and putting the town in a huge liability. The physical space is too small. It was, it was undersized for a community of 14,000 people. Obviously, we're well beyond that now. Every morning and every afternoon, there's sort of this Rubik's Cube sort of event that takes place of trying to get all of the equipment in under, undersized. I know there have been accidents and bumps and minor issues with some of the equipment just because there is no room there. And obviously, it's not a good and safe location. There are concerns about the safety of the employees and equipment being available to issues of vandalism and theft. So it's, it's basically an antiquated building and site. Next slide, please. The, the crew size has increased rather dramatically since, since 1969. The, at the time that the building was designed, it was strictly an all-male workforce. Obviously, we now have members of all genders that are working there, and we have no facilities. We're also looking at some of the issues. There is an existing solar collection system on the roof, which is probably getting well into its lifespan. That's going to need to be replaced. We're also looking at the possibility of a new building, perhaps using geothermal heat. We've asked the engineering firm to look at that. We also have, there have been some upgrades to better manage a stormwater runoff, and there have been some tremendous improvements that we've made over the years, but we still have a site that needs to be improved. Next slide, please. So where do we stand now? So the feasibility study has been done and reviewed. Basically, the, the recommendation from the committee serves as that review period. We're recommending that we have a phased approach to the project. One of the phases is to develop a comprehensive site plan, to make sure that we don't take some action that ends up painting us into a corner at some later point. The whole issue of the transfer station, there's a political element to that. I can tell you that there is, amongst the committee as constituted, there's absolutely no support to the idea of closing the transfer station, going for all curbside pickup as a town service. Matter of fact, the committee vehemently opposed that. So we've sort of put that whole issue of the transfer station off to the side at this point. I think that's a, if the select board wishes to discuss it further, that's probably a good subject for a different committee or a different process. Committee is recommending that one of the first steps we need to go through is looking at the fuel depot, which provides fuel not only for all the town vehicles, but also for all the school district vehicles. The existing tanks are not at the end of their lifespan, but they're getting very close, and it's a multi-year process of getting that design permitted. And that obviously will have to fit into that comprehensive site plan. I'm pleased to acknowledge that the select board did approve $250,000 ARPA money to move ahead with that. Next slide, please. A further recommendation. We'd like to see in the town manager's capital improvement plan that he'll be submitting shortly, funding for a design of new facility. And we fully acknowledge that there will eventually be a debt exclusion override for the project. This is going to be a substantially expensive project. And, but I think that's probably a year or two down the road. It's also going to be occurring as some of our other debt is retired. Next slide, please. So, we feel that the, this is a multi-year project. It's going to be a tough project to accomplish because the existing operation needs a place to, to continue to operate while a new building is being constructed. I think this is somewhat akin to the situation we've seen with the new boardwalk campus the school district just finished. Having to, you know, keep operations going on one side of the site while you're doing demolition and construction on the other side. So there will probably be a need to move some of the equipment at some point, so we need to be aware of that and keep our eyes open for opportunities there. Next slide, please. And finally, it was the unanimous vote of the committee that the replacement of the facility is the highest priority physical infrastructure project for the town of Acton. The sorts of operations that are conducted out of that building, whether it be highway, the issues with the grounds maintenance, reparationary maintenance, the engineering department, these impact every single person in town. Every time people say, well, gee, we need more sidewalks, we need new culvert work, we need, you know, improved maintenance of our street trees, everything ties back to that one facility. So this is truly a community-wide project that will have benefits for everyone, and hopefully, we won't have to talk about it again another 50 years. Thank you. Are you willing to take any questions? Okay. Because we said it all. The, I, a couple of closing points. I would like to thank the members of the committee for their hard work and diligence on this, working through the summer and, you know, it's probably not the most glamorous project going, but it's certainly something that's significant to the town. I'd like to thank all of the people who've worked on it. I'd also like to thank the number of thoughtful comments that we've gotten from the public that I think have made this potentially a much better project than it could be. The existing committee is set to sunset at the end of this year. I think there's some interest amongst the committee to continue along, to continue to do some outreach. So I would probably bring back to the board within the next meeting or two to see if there's any interest in continuing the committee along in that sort of a capacity. Thank you. David?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the committee as well. Very, very good job. I know that this, you know, upgrade to this facility is sorely needed. You know, I think most of us have been in the facility. You know, we want to keep, you know, have the, have the, a good, safe place for our employees to work. We need a place to keep, you know, these millions of dollars' worth of equipment, which is, it's very impressive if you go there in the off-season and see the trucks parked with barely enough room to open the door to get in the cab, and how they got the trucks all into the building is impressive. And then they don't really have any place to work on the trucks. Anyway, it's, it's sorely needed, and I, and I just wanted to thank the, the committee.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item six. Update on proposed crosswalk traffic control system on Great Road near Brook Street. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. This is an area in the community that unfortunately, we've had a lot of tragic accidents and crashes over the last two or three weeks. They've been reported in the news, and it's very tragic. And we're, we're doing what we can to try to identify ways to make sure that these things don't happen anymore. Some of the work that we're looking at on Great Road is work that started earlier this year, where we completed a complete streets study. This is not easy to read in a format like this, but it is available on our website right on the homepage, actonma.gov. And if you go to the, below the fold, there's links to projects, and one of them is a Great Road Complete Streets Study, and I encourage people to check it out. It identifies ways to make improvements throughout the corridor to make it safer for pedestrians and other users of the road, which is something that we are very much in need of. Earlier in October, we brought forward a proposal for a new system for crosswalk traffic control at the Great Road Crosswalk near Brook Street. This is the location of one of the fatal pedestrian crash earlier last month. But the proposal that we have is to create this Hawk system, which allows a user to push a button on the side of the road and actually create a red light. This is an example of how it's being used somewhere in the Midwest. They're not very common around here, but the board approved it in October. And the good news is that we met with state officials at the end of last month, and although we had approved funding locally to do this, they agreed to instead fund it and have it installed by the summer. It's something that will take time to put in, but we think it'll make a big difference. A user basically pushes a button, it flashes yellow, and then it flashes red and cars all stop. Then you go across, and then the lights go away, and it returns to this condition and stays that way until another pedestrian comes up. So this is, I think, a really good way to try to improve crossings. This is just one crosswalk location. There are several in this community that we need to continue to find ways to address. This is an example. So that was just the update. The update is that the state is going to pay for it, and it's going to be installed before the summer. It needs to be designed, it needs to be procured, and they are going to expedite that to the extent that they can. I just wanted to also mention to the board while, while we're talking about these traffic control devices, that we've installed several of them in the last few years. Can't really see where, where these are, but you can get a sense that they're all over town. We have approximately 10 rapid, rapid reflective beacons, and we're hoping to do more. The board also just approved one for the Discovery Museum, and we'd like to identify new places. The state has also committed that they are going to be out and making improvements to the Great Road, the entire corridor, over the next two months, and then looking at some longer-term improvements over the next few years, which it's, it's very sad that we're discussing it based, following some very serious tragedies, but it's, we're moving forward and trying to identify ways to make sure it doesn't happen again. So that's the update on Great Road, if there's any questions. Happy to take them.
Questions in the board? Jim?
I wanted to check with you. It seems like that having the state take it over is not only a financial advantage, but that if we were doing it, we'd have to keep, we'd have to go through a lot of permitting processes with the state that the state doesn't have to do if it's their own project. So this should help it get in quicker. Is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the reason that it will be expedited, is that we don't have to go through the state permitting process because it's a state road and it's a state project instead of being a town project on a state road. So it will improve the pace that what this improvement has made.
And just the final comment. It was just really, it was very heartening for me to read the report of having our legislative team and you meet with the state and be able to, you know, so quickly get to some really positive conclusions. Thank you for being a part of that.
Yep.
Scott Meyers from Central Street. Yeah, this is, you know, a real problem, safety, that's a very dangerous stretch of road. I understand it's expensive, it's a state road, but there's got to be something you can do. I mean, it's getting dark early now. Didn't really talk about the Harris Street thing area. That's where the little boy was hit, right? That's a very dangerous area, too. It's not near a restaurant and a major shopping center, but, you know, a lot of people live around there, and they've got to get around. You know, I've got one of those flashing speed signs near my house. Let's not pat ourselves on the back too much about these. They're good. But then they take them down and they put them somewhere else in town for a few weeks, or they got to charge them up, you know? I got people going by my house at 50 miles an hour every day right now while I'm waiting for them to put it back. You know, as soon as they put it back, it really helps. But can you at least, like, put some cones around the crosswalk? Put some cones, they used to do that on Hayward Road, I know. You know, they put cones right in the middle of the crosswalk, so yeah, it kind of gets your attention, like, there's a crosswalk here, maybe I should pay attention, you know? These people drive way too fast, and it's going to happen again and again on 2A, you know? That's a really tough stretch, and I think we should be investing more in, so I can have that sign near my house to help me and my neighbors every day, not just a couple of weeks, and then a couple of weeks, not so much, you know? We should be investing in that. That should be a priority for the town, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madeleine Cruz, Ashram Way. I just want to echo what this gentleman said. As the town manager was doing the presentation, is there any way that you guys can advocate to have that same thing implemented where Cesar Soto was unfortunately hit? The kid is still in a coma. The coma's not induced. I think we have to do a better job. This could have beaten any of our children. It's just heartening to know that he's still in a coma and fighting for his life, and I'm asking you all to do the best that you can to advocate, fight with the state, so that the same thing is done over Harris Street and needs more attention. It was a 13-year-old child. We have to do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Just to follow up on that question, yes, that is another area. There are several crosswalks stretching from Concord, the town of Concord, all the way to basically the town of Littleton, that, that the crosswalks are being reviewed to determine if this system, we would try to get the state to support doing that in other places. As I mentioned, this is the first one, and we hope it's a successful implementation and we can use it. And we hope it's a successful implementation and we can use it in other places that, that need it.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the state do the other ones at the same time. Because not only do you need it at Harris Street, you also need it for the people walking out from Davis Road to cross to go to Donnellan's. And I know that that's not in the complete streets thing. But unfortunately, we have a, a long history of letting people get killed before we get any safety objects put into the areas that are dangerous. And I want to know if, I know that you've put up a blinky sign, but it still says 40 miles an hour. I know the thing, the road is supposed to be 40 miles an hour, but I thought that perhaps just for, since it's darker and all that sort of stuff, we could change it down to 25 miles an hour, which I think is the speed limit for complete streets. And so we could sort of jump the gun for our complete streets thing. And so it would slow down the traffic for the whole of that section before we even get the, what, the light in.
Thank you.
Hi, Daniel Gilfix, Vanderbilt Road. Echoing what she just said, it occurred to me that the speed limit is really too fast on Great Road. I think it was set years and years ago, similar to River Street, which is where I live. And, you know, we, we set the speed limit at a pace where we thought cars could drive. But that was before people moved in. Now Great Road is really, really congested. There are stores, there are people coming in and out, there are people walking. I know it's a state road. If there's any way we can lower it to 35 or anything, just to make it safer. Because 40, 45, which is what people usually drive at, is just, it's an accident waiting to happen. And it, and it has in many, many times this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Hardy, Great Road. I thought that, I heard there was, might be talk of putting a temporary crosswalk at some of these. I know we put the tempor, not tempor, we put the speed limit on either end of where the Grail Trail is and down by Strawberry Hill Road. Is there a possibility you put a temporary crosswalk, flashing lights? I, I thought I heard that somewhere.
Mr. Manager?
So we, and those are, that's a state road and the state has deployed those new, those new radar feedback signs for us. I believe they're putting four in total on Great Road.
Just this for radars?
Yeah.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about push a button and then see some lights on either side temporarily, not just a radar station.
Yeah, so we're meeting with them again on the 13th or 14th. And we can talk about temporary measures like that. I don't know that they're any available, we'll certainly talk, we'll certainly talk about it.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda Videm, Whittier. I'm, I'm also want to echo kind of what everybody else is stating about how Great Road is very dangerous. Is there any plans to also put in some more lighting for the street as well? It's extremely dark. Even the lights that we do have are extremely dim. And I don't know why they're so dim. I go to other areas and other towns and their lights on their main roads are much more bright. With winter coming up, snow coming up, and as we just turn back our clocks, it's getting darker and darker out there. I'm just wondering if there's any plans to also implement more lighting on that street.
Mr. Manager?
So we are, in the short term, we're looking at the actual fixtures themselves to see if they can be turned up, you know, whatever the technical term is. And we'll also be looking in the longer term at other ways to improve the lighting. So yes.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd make an observation. I was involved for a number of years in, in supervising the street lighting in town. And at that point, the biggest complaint that people had was that we were going to be putting too much light on these roads. So some of the choices that were made back then when we upgraded and went to the LEDs is we went with a fairly low-power emitter in respect for that because people were not as focused on safety as more of the environmental impacts of lighting. So it's probably time to rethink some of that. David?
Fortunately, I think you can get both now, right? Because back in the, in the day, the light leaked horizontally a lot and went in people's, excuse me, went in people's windows and things. Now the, our new downwardly focused lights leak much less. And so it's easier to have the area of focus lit more without affecting people in nearby buildings.
Thank you. I believe we have one caller. Yes, they should be able to speak now, Mr. Chair.
Hi, this is Kara. Again, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm always very excited when I agree with Scott Smires and Ann Chang. And so I would put a bid in for cones at these intersections. It's an easy way, it's not expen, it's not expensive. Also more solar-powered detectors, they really do work. I'm, I'm going to not only say that I support in front of Davis Road, but also in front of Donnellan's because the Strawberry Hill apartment people are walking across that highway. And I think there's much more traffic from Donnellan, excuse me, from Davis Square and Strawberry Hill Road than there are going to Raffscallion's. And so I will get to, I have two more comments. One is that I agree with Madeline. There's a stop sign at practically every back road intersection. So why not put these devices at every intersection along Route 2A? And I, lastly, the town, under state laws, I understand it, can declare a speed-safety zone on a number of highways and get that changed to 25 miles an hour or even 20 miles an hour. Wayland and Weston and other towns have gotten these by using the speed-safety zone tactic. That the town, I believe a town meeting has to vote for that. And then the select board can then write a letter and say that the town meeting has voted. And then it's very difficult for the state to say no. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Linda Videm, Great Elm Way. And I agree with everything people said. I'd like to be optimistic and think that people would observe a slower speed limit. Maybe we need a town-wide public education to stop talking on your phone, observe the speed limit. A lot of people may not know about the accidents that have happened. If you don't have kids in school, they may not know about the tragic accident on Harris Street. And so people drive crazy. And it's not just around here, but maybe some kind of ti, town-wide initiative. And I don't have any ideas about that, but maybe we can come up with something. Because, you know, these accidents are not happening just because there's going to be a speed limit on there. And these are all great ideas, but people drive, so we need to reach them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager? If memory serves me, didn't we vote to establish a default speed limit for all roads in town? And I, I know that there was a lot of posting requirements that was going to have to be undertaken. I noticed just recently that apparently the town of Littleton has initiated the same thing and they've, they've got some signs up already for that default limit. Maybe if you could give us an update on that, if not now, maybe at the next meeting?
Sure, I can, I can do a quick update. So the town meeting, I think it was two years ago, approved that townwide, accepting the statute that allows us to create a townwide speed limit. The select board did set it at 25. The director, Corey York, has ordered several dozen or hundred, how many signs? A lot of signs to put up in areas. But the, I think the, the, the place where these will go are places that are not otherwise posted by a warranted speed limit. So you wouldn't be able to change a, a speed limit on a road that's already has a warrant for it to be that way just with that townwide bylaw. It was to kind of make the new default in areas that don't have a, a set speed limit.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank the Acton Police Department. I saw this morning or I witnessed many people getting pulled over in that corridor. So I wanted to thank them and I would like, I would hope to see more of that. Because that really deters people from speeding more often as, as much as the radars do, the temporary ones.
Thank you. All right. Item seven. Discuss request to allow parking on Strawberry Hill Road and requested zoning changes related to parking at 5 Strawberry Hill Road. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I just have a couple of other visuals for this one, too. So the owner and proprietor of Raffscallion Table and Tap, who is here with us tonight in the past, had asked that we, or more, most, very recently asked that we reverse the restriction on parking on Strawberry Hill Road. So this wasn't posted as a public hearing to change the speed, uh, parking restriction, but I wanted to just take this opportunity to discuss, have the board discuss it before we do that. So in 2021, the board created the parking restriction on Strawberry Hill Road. It was following a few years of, of work to determine that. In 2018, we did a road safety audit, which is a project where you bring in an engineering firm and we walk the street and we look at ideas to make it safer in several ways. And it was recommended that parking on that street is not safe because of how narrow it is. And so that was a recommendation at the time. I don't believe it was formally adopted, but it was something that I believe we, we were, we were considering. And then somewhere along the line in 2021, it was requested that we do actually post the signs, no parking, to make it clear that it's not allowed. And so that's where we are now. The, the primary reasons for not allowing parking there is just, it's just too narrow and it creates an unsafe condition for people that are driving by and people that get out of their car that did park. But if there's an interest in bringing that back, I wanted to mention it to the board now for the opportunity to discuss it and allow others to speak if they had concerns related to that. And we can talk about that first and then move on to the other thing or I can talk about the whole request in its totality.
Let's see if we can't deal with this particular item by itself. Comments from members of the board?
Thank you. At, at the time we voted for this a, a couple of years ago, there were comments from both the police department and the fire department. The police department was concerned about the safety of, of having a parking in there. And the fire department was concerned about accessibility for its trucks into the nearby apartments. And so I, I, I don't think anything has changed since then. And so if we were to, you know, talk about removing the parking restrictions, I would want to know that something's changed. It seems to me that if we wanted to allow parking on Strawberry Hill, we'd have to widen the street.
Thank you.
I just want to echo what David said. My question was if anything changed from then until now? And I don't see that it has.
Well, as I mentioned, we just completed a Great Road Complete Streets Study. And one of the things that it looked at was realigning that intersection where it meets Great, Great Road to make it easier to navigate in, in that proposed concept, which we haven't really brought forward, but it was looked at. It didn't really create a new opportunity for parking. But there are other ways that you could look at that road intersection to potentially do that, if that was the goal.
In China, radical suggestion, make Strawberry Hill one-way going east. How's that? Going towards Concord. I know, I know everybody would hate it, but think about it for a while. I mean, the road is not only narrow and curvy at the, when it comes out on the Great Road, but as it passes Esterbrook and it goes all the way up, it's also curvy. And of course, all the cars would then go down Esterbrook, but hey.
Thank you. I believe we have one person in the audience, racial audience, that would like to speak.
Carol Scharshink, Scharshink. I'm sorry if I said that wrong, I'm usually able to speak. Thank you. Could you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you. That I just, in reference to that suggestion about turning Strawberry Hill Road into a one-way road heading towards Concord, I think that proposal was kicked around extensively sometime in the early 2000s and not passed for a lot of very good reasons. I live at the intersection just slightly east of where Esterbrook Road meets Strawberry Hill Road. So it means that now where I'm four tenths of a mile to, from Donnellan's, it would be two and a half miles if I had to circumvent and go around Pope Road to go to the supermarket. So I didn't sign up for that when I bought my house in 1985 and I'm not looking for it to be a one-way road. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager? Go ahead.
I'll go first and then I'll, I'll give it to you. Thank you. A quick question. In terms of updates that we've gotten from the police and fire department, have their recommendations changed at all? Have we approached them with possibly revising this vote or no updates?
John?
We would do that in a formal way if it were to be brought forward, but in an informal way I did ask and it hasn't changed as of now.
Go ahead.
Hello, Heidi White. I'm representing Raffscallion tonight. I'm also representing the property manager and the property owner. With regard to Strawberry Hill Road parking, we brought it up again because it is a huge safety concern. We've known that our restaurant with, it's a beloved restaurant in town, that a lot of people go there. And we were very concerned that a tragedy was going to happen. And so that's why we, we've had a lot of difficulty in being allowed to have parking on our own property in the way that parking has changed, especially since COVID with parking patterns, with travel patterns. We may have a table of four with four different cars and we have 30 spaces. So as a way to try to find a creative way to have parking, we used to have parking on Strawberry Hill Road. And so we thought that we would present that possibility again, possibly on just one side of the street, so that it didn't narrow it too much. We've actually heard from residents that they liked it when there was parking because the cars traveled a little bit slower, that it's become a faster road. So that's, that's the reason for us bringing that proposal ahead was to try to prevent a tragedy. Unfortunately, that tragedy has occurred. So we were, still wanted to bring that forward to see if, if we could have parking there so that another tragedy doesn't happen.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Are you folks interested in, in revisiting this? I've got some comments of my own that I'll make. Okay. You know, I, I would be very reluctant to reverse the vote that we took just barely over a year ago. Unless we get something from police and fire. I think it was very clear in the, in the safety study that was done of Strawberry Hill that this was a problem. So I, I recognize the fact that there's a, a significant problem with, with some of the commercial uses right there at Strawberry Hill Road. But I don't want to get into a situation where we go back to what we have documentation shows is an unsafe situation in the past. So I think that we should be more of a thoughtful mood rather than a reflex mode on this. I'd certainly be interested to hear what my colleagues have to say. David?
I, I think the time to revisit this is when something changes and if we realign this intersection as part of the, the Great Road's safety effort, I think that's a time to revisit this myself.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Um, the other, just a quick other thing, with the complete streets study, maybe one thing we could do is do a little bit more digging to see what available parking options there are, and if there's any ways to expand that in a safe way. So maybe something to note that we as a select board want to potentially prioritize.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I don't think, I don't think we need to take a vote on this, but it doesn't seem to be a lot of support to, at this point, to change this.
Okay, I think, you know, we're going to continue to be discussing Great Road and ways we can improve it. So in the process of doing that, if I identify opportunities to look at potentially parking on Strawberry Hill Road as part of that process, we certainly would bring it back, or ask that you allow us to bring it back at that time. Because, you know, there's an idea to make that street one way. I'm not sure how far we would get with that idea, but I certainly would like to look at it, and other things that could come up as we have. The state now is going to be investing time to take that Great Road study that we did and actually take it the rest of the way to the Littleton Line, and also go back over some of our initial recommendations and take them a little bit further. So I think there's going to be some opportunities to look at things like this in the, in the coming months and year, if not right now.
Thank you. I'm certainly interested in hearing whatever we can do to improve the situation. Along those lines, I know there were a series of other recommendations made for Strawberry Hill Road. Have any of those been implemented at this point?
Corey was just here to answer that question, but he must have stepped out. I think that we, I'll have to get back to you on that. I hope, I believe so, but I don't have them specifically outlined.
Thank you. So I know you had some other, the other half of this was zoning issues. Please proceed with that.
Yes, thank you. So as I mentioned, Rapsgalian is a very popular business in town. It gets a lot of people to go there, people from not just Acton, but people from surrounding communities. And it's been very popular in the time that I've been here, the last four or five years. And as part of that popularity, they've expanded how they use the site. And so I think the request to reconsider the zoning on that property is a complex one. And the staff here have been willing to take measures to work on that. But we want to make sure that we have direction from the board to do that. And also, before asking for that, we want to make sure that the more the picture is understood. So just generally, you know, the property is over on the corner of Strawberry Hill, as you know, and they've expanded how it's been used since 2015, when the board said it could have 75 seats. And the bottom line here is that to support the expanded operations, which, you know, their success has, is requiring, they have a lot of people that want to go there. To continue to expand operations in the way that they're able to, we need to make updates to some code things. The zoning needs to be changed, and one of the biggest constraints is wastewater capacity. There's only so much seating that you can have in a restaurant without having sewer capacity or a large septic system to pack it up. So, you know, we did a study on Great Road. This was during the pandemic, or coming out of it. We did a rapid recovery plan, and one of the, there were 10 recommendations in the rapid recovery plan. One of them was to look at wastewater solutions for Great Road, because it's, it's not just Rapsgalian that's constrained. There are other businesses up and down the corridor that would like to do more with their sites, but because of limited septic capacity, they're not able to. So that's really a big thing here. We could change the zoning right now, and this issue would still be here. So I think there's a comprehensive solution that we could take, but I think it's going to take some effort, and we just want to make sure that there's support to do all of that. And Heidi already came up, and they, I think they're going to want to share some of their thoughts also, but just to take through the current zoning, it's a limited business, which is blue, and you'll see on Great Road there's some other blue there as well. To change the zoning and limited, some of the zoning changes that we could take and make would be to reduce the minimum open space requirement, reduce the setback requirements, change the parking maximums in limited business district. And then if you look at overall zoning by law and the general parking regulations, we could look at reducing dimensional regulations, removing landscape buffers. Those are all things that we could do with the zoning to help facilitate the use that I think that they would want to have with their site based on the temporary work that they've done to increase parking. So that's, yeah, and so that's sort of the overview, the bigger picture of where some of the issues that we're trying to work through with the property owners and people in, all on Great Road. So if there's any questions, or if folks wanted to present more information, we could do that now.
And Nat will talk as well. She's the property manager. So with regard to the plans that we have going on, we do currently have the septic being designed. We have our engineers working on it, Larry Green and Ryan Smith. And our current capacity with the 75 seats, I'm not quite sure what that has to do with the parking. I believe that they're two separate issues, because the parking, even with 75 seats, having 30 spaces does not accommodate the 75 capacity. Simply because, as I mentioned when I came up here before, people are just, their driving patterns are different. So you have a table of four with four cars. We also have a bunch of employees, and we don't want them to park over at Great Road, over at Donlands either. We don't actually want them to do that. We shuttle them, because it's just, it's, it's too dangerous. It's always been dangerous. It's even more so now with the tragic accident that happened about three weeks ago. So the septic is in the works. That's, we're planning to do that by January. We're actually improving our kitchen as well in either December or January. But as far as the parking, we're just looking to use our own, our own lot. And I think that you had that on the plan there. When Claude had Che Claude, he was able to use that side lot, and we're not asking to change anything different. As far as stormwater, my understanding is that MS4 requires stormwater permitting for anything that's over one acre of disturbance, and our entire lot is not even one acre. So I don't believe that stormwater would, that we would have to have stormwater permit for this work. And if you actually view the lot, it's gravel. It does have drainage. It is pervious. So we're just basically looking to be able to use our own land. It is a beloved community restaurant. We did start a petition, and you guys can view that online. It's on iPetitions. We had 3,500 signatures for it. And since the accident that claimed Kevin Shaw's life, we've had another 600. So we're at 4,100 people in support of allowing us to have parking on our, our own lot. So we will do whatever it takes to have to do that. I'm just not quite sure that the septic has anything to do with it. We are planning septic for our capacity. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natalie, property manager at five Strawberry Hill, and daughter of the property owner Claude Mecal. And we just want it on record that we fully support Rapsgalian and what they're trying to do. And just reiterate again that we're, they're not necessarily asking for more seats, just more spots. Because if you think about 30 spots for 75 seats, it is not enough. I mean, I meet, especially now, like even Facebook, people are getting together with friends from all over. I mean, I meet some of my friends a couple of times a year. There's 10 to 12 of us, and we each take our own car. So one party of 10 in the corner of the restaurant, that's a third of the party, like half the parking's almost gone already. So we just live in a different world now, where people drive their own cars. When you even have, I sometimes meet my husband Peter at a restaurant, because he dropped off kids here, he's coming from work, and I'm coming from there. So 75 spaces with only 30 parking spots, just, it's not enough. So, and we're in fully support of using the property and adding spaces to that property. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is let's break these issues up a little bit. And I know, obviously, concern is on parking, but I'm equally concerned with, with the issues with septic. Mr. Manager, do you know how many seats are in the restaurant at present?
I don't have an exact count. I know that they're permitted for 75, and I believe there's more than that outside, but I don't know the exact number.
Okay. I, I think that I'd be really concerned. My understanding is that the, from some guidance I got from the Board of Health, the septic system's been in failure for two years now?
Yes, the septic is in failure. And we've been working with the engineers to get a septic plan in place. I will say that COVID happened, and we're a restaurant, and we acknowledge that it has been in failure and that we need to do it. But it took everything, every last bit of will and every last penny to stay afloat during COVID. We kept all our employees. We didn't lay anybody off. Some people chose to leave, but we did not let anybody go. We were having them sew cushions and everything else just to keep them employed. So we just did not have the money for it during COVID. We're finally out of COVID. We have the money for it. We're moving forward with it. And we can share with you, well, we've shared with Cheryl and the Board of Health, the plans that we do have for the septic. We're willing to talk about anything, but the plans are well along, well along the way to happening. So the, yes, we do apologize that we are late on it. We just hope that there's some understanding and empathy and for what we went through during the COVID crisis with being a restaurant. As far as the septic, I'm going to say it again. We can talk about the septic and the capacity, and we can talk about the parking, because I'm not quite sure that they have, that one has anything to do with the other. So the parking is, even with 75 seats, we don't have enough. I think that the septic and capacity is a separate issue. So we can discuss both, but just, I just want to be clear that they are separate.
Well, I recognize that. But here's the situation. In about a month, we're going to be asked to vote to approve liquor licenses for the next year. And I think, obviously, you've got a parking problem, but if we've got a septic system that's in failure, and it's been in failure for a long period of time, and it's impacting the health and safety and environmental issues with the town, I think this board will have to think long and hard as to whether or not we would continue to issue that liquor permit. And, and I'm...
Okay. So you're saying that, so even with our septic, that we have the plans, that we're planning to do it, that the construction is going to take place in January, that you would not renew our liquor license at the end of December?
What, I can't predict what the board might say. What, what my point is, is that this is the first that I've heard that you've got a plan that's moving forward, and you're talking about a January timeframe, possibility of a temporary extension of the, of the permits. I don't know where we would go with it, but I think it's important to realize that parking issues aside, problems with septic system, and I don't know if there are any other issues with the building itself, all of these things have to be looked at, and we have to make sure that, that we have a well-documented path forward, so that the public is protected, and hopefully so that Rapsgalian can continue as a viable business. I love the place. I'm there at least twice a month myself. And, you know, at least until tonight, Peter and I have always thought of each other as friends. But I think, you know, we really need to make sure that, that we have some comprehensive boundaries on all of this, so we know exactly what your expectations are and what our expectations are.
That sounds great. So what would you like us to do so that we can get our liquor license?
Well, Mr. Manager?
So that, you know, that's something that we would talk about in six weeks. But I think just to your question about how septic is related to the zoning, is that we could have a town meeting tonight and change the zoning to allow parking that looks like your current use of the site, which is the picture all the right. But it doesn't change the approved site plan that's been in effect since the 70s for that site, which was, there was a U special permit in 15 that said, yes, you can have 75 seats, and if you do something with septic, you can have up to 90. But it appears that you have more than 75 seats if you take consideration what's outside. And again, I haven't counted them. So I think the question is, how many seats are being used, and how much more is that than 75? And how much parking is needed if you were only at 75? Is the question that I think we need to reconcile, because if you get a very new septic system that only goes up to 75, but you're having more people than that in there every night, then it's still not going to be approved through a site plan, because it's not in accordance with the bylaws. That's why. So we want to, we want, I showed you the slide of changes we can make to zoning. We want to look at that. But we could do that and still not have what you, what you're looking for, is my concern.
So the, the seating, I know that we were originally zoned, Peter can answer this, for 90?
We can't, we can't.
Okay. So, so, so 90, thank you. So 90 seats, right? So I know that you guys look at like, oh, it's outside and inside, and we have this, we have a restaurant in Starbridge, and it's the same thing. When that outside is full, there's literally nobody inside. It's just that it's, our business is seasonal. So are there more than 90? No. Are there more than 75? Possibly. The question is, if we need to update the septic, and this is the conversation that we had, we said we'll just have to do 75 seats to be able to do the septic. And I think it says repair rather than a new. And we have been in contact with, I'm not sure why you haven't heard of this, because we've been very much in contact with the town, that they have all of the information. They've been CC'd with Larry and Ryan with these plans moving forward. And of course, we are willing to work with the town in any way that we have to, to make the septic work, so that the town is pleased. That's absolutely, we have no problem with that whatsoever. As far as the parking, it's even if we're only 75 seats, we still need the parking. So that's just sort of where we are.
Okay.
But as far as the liquor license, I'm not sure where that, that is completely new to me, and I'm a little bit taken aback. Simply because, you said you haven't heard it, we have been in contact with the town quite a bit. In fact, I know that there's been some, some difficulty there, but we've been very forthcoming with everything, saying, you know, this is what we're doing, this is the plan, this is the timeframe, and it's at January at the latest. In fact, Peter said that, I don't know where he went, but Peter said that it's possibly December at this point. They're trying to move it up to do it before the end of the year, before the ground freezes, blah, blah. So it's, it's in the works. But to bring up the liquor license now, I just, I don't, I would like to know what we need to do so that the threat of taking our liquor license doesn't come to fruition.
Thank you. So I'd certainly open comments for my colleagues. David?
So I think, you know, we normally renew liquor licenses as a matter of course, but if there's a reason for us not to, we don't, right? So I don't think there's a, you know, that's the primary point of discussion, at least not from my, my point of view. I'd be looking for, to have a cooperative relationship here. That's not been the case from my point of view in the past. I don't know exactly how you work with staff. I'm not in those meetings. The letters that you've sent to the board, including the petition, accuse us of stuff, which I, from my point of view, is not totally correct, right? And, and it's, you're trying to, with that petition coerce us into changing the zoning for you, right? That's just rude, right, or beyond rude. And it's not a cooperative relationship from my point of view.
I would agree with that.
I want Rapsgalian to be successful. I mean, you brought up tonight that you have 4,100 people supporting that petition, which to me is advocating to allow you to violate zoning. We can't allow businesses to violate zoning, right? If you have a reasonable case for why the zoning is wrong in your area, or a case where a particular type of zoning is, could be improved, let's look at that. But that's, that's a cooperative relationship. That's not, again, I don't, I'm not privy to everything, but from what I've heard, it's not been a cooperative relationship. I also know that, and I don't agree that the septic is completely a separate issue, right? There's been other health and safety issues here, right? And I don't want to go into those here unless you want me to go into them in public session. And, and they've not all been satisfied, and they're, those are, those are important things, right?
And that's, and that's why we're expanding our kitchen at the same time that we're doing the septic.
That, that, that's great. So for the...
Well, you asked, you brought up that there were some concerns, so I just wanted to let you know that we're addressing those as well.
Great, thank you. Do, do you have approval from the Board of Health for your new septic system?
They've been working with us through this whole thing and saying that, in, in looking at the plans, we don't have the final, final plans yet, but they've been very supportive of us moving through this.
So you've been in front of the Board of Health, and they... they send it back to you with some changes they'd like to see? I'm just trying to figure out the state you're in with the Board of Health.
I wish Peter were here, because I don't know the, oh, hi Pete. What is, what is the exact status of the?
The hearing's about parking here. We keep bringing up and deflecting and talking about professionalism, so I'm not sure we should, we should practice what we preach here and just focus on topic and be professional. So I just want to go back to parking. With seventy-five seats, and Dean made a great example, we host Alliance Club twice a month. And we host them at a discount because they're a terrific, terrific community organization. When they come, it's thirty cars. Sometimes it's twenty, sometimes twenty-five, but we can call it almost thirty cars. Our lot's gone. At six o'clock, six-thirty during the winter, even at this time of the year, we can't park without using our pervious area that can, that my father-in-law Claude used for, since nineteen seventy-six. We have to park at Donovan's or at the church. And our employees have to do that. So we have to host Lions at a discount, make seven hundred dollars for the whole night. That's not a sustainable business model. So how do we get, you know, because you can't, a lot of people aren't gonna walk from Donovan's. So I just want to focus on the parking. And I agree with everything you guys are saying about the septic and a few other renovations that are happening. So David, I'd like to ask you about that, like, how would we zone to fix that issue where, because we're not viable business, not that the Lions are there every night, but it's still an issue. How do we get more cars to accommodate seventy-five people? Because thirty cars, you pigeonhole us, and there's tragedies have happened. And I wasn't putting blame on anybody. I was just saying this, you know, we've, we have been fighting this for eight years. We have warned of this. And there really hasn't been any solutions from the Board of Selectmen. So I'm asking you, David, what, what would be a solution? Who does the zoning? Is it you guys that would actually do that job? Is it the town?
It's town meeting that does the zoning.
Have you brought it up, or what can you do to help us find that?
So it's, you know, you know,
You want your solution, so?
You don't set the agenda for what goes on here, right?
No, that's why we've asked eight years to set the agenda.
It's not just parking, right? It's not just parking. I know that's what you would like, but it's not just parking. It's whatever, you know, we'd like to ask you about. So the, this is this, this thing, right? And in every communication that I have received from Rapsgalian or your representative, it's been accusing us of something or whatever, there is not this cooperative back and forth.
David, I've sent you one letter or an email. It was after a massive tragedy.
And the petition and the letters after the accident, right? It's not just that. Right? I'm just telling you what I see.
But, okay, yeah, you're just, you're being unprofessional. I just wanted to know.
I'm not being unprofessional.
I just want to interrupt.
Yeah.
I feel like you're trying to jam a size eleven foot into a size seven shoe. And that, that's the comment that I have to make.
Yeah.
We can't base a business around, you know, we can't accommodate the zoning for one business. It's across the board.
Right. I mean, for, I kind of look at it more as, first of all, on the agenda, it said, oh, wow, this got really loud, Allison. On the agenda, it said parking. There wasn't really anything about the septic on the agenda. So that's kind of throwing me a little bit. And again, I'm not sure where the communication breakdown is with the town, because we're, I mean, I have the emails. We're already paying a lot of bills to the septic people. And Heidi's been working with the Board of Health, so these plans are in place. We weren't really ready to really talk about that and give our evidence, because that wasn't on the agenda. But for me, just in general, a restaurant that has and is approved for seventy-five seats should have more than thirty parking spaces. That's just, to me, kind of logical. There are other restaurants in town, and maybe that's not a concern for them because they're just kind of next to other huge parking spots, you know, so they don't really have this issue to try to, to fight it. To me, it's not about, the septic is kind of, is a different issue. Like, for me, it's just simple, you break it down. We have a restaurant with seventy-five seats and thirty spots. That, that's trying to fit something small, but like, that doesn't make any sense to me. Maybe back in the fifties, when it was, you know, husband and wife going together to dinner, but that, that's not the world we live in anymore. People are getting together from all over. They're meeting up. Like, that's what was on the agenda, and that's what we're here to talk about. We're not here to talk about anything else, really. It's just trying to get enough parking spaces for the seats that we are allowed. That's, that, to me, is the issue. That's why I'm here. And that's what I want voted on, like, or for, if it's the town meeting, I guess, I'm not really sure where to go for that, but I know in the bylaws, it states whatever, three spots or however many, three, one parking spot to every three people. But that's just not logical nowadays. So I guess the question is, where do we go to change that, or to request to change that, or to vote to change that? Because that's kind of, that's why, that's, that's what was on the agenda, and that's what I'm curious about.
Thank you. So I think, unless my colleagues have anything more to say about the, the septic issue, is, I, I just want to see that there's some progress being made on that.
Right, but, but we do have the progress on, but that wasn't on the, I can forward you all the emails.
And I, and I will ask the town manager to be able to update us on that at our meeting on the twenty-first. John?
Yeah, I think, just to clarify, the reason that we brought, I brought this forward is that we could change the zoning right now, and it doesn't mean that your site would support the parking that you're trying to add. And there are several reasons for that. One-
Can I? Okay. I just don't understand the language. I'm sorry. I like things to be like dumbed down to me. When you say, change the zoning, of, of what?
So when you ask us to allow more parking, that essentially means change the zoning, because the current zoning does not allow for more parking.
The current zoning of what? Spots?
Of the, so this is the zoning of the area.
That's what I don't mean. I don't know what you mean by zoning. The number of customers you can have seating.
So the zoning by law, and I'm not an expert on this, but, but the zoning by law has different shades of, of overlays that allow different uses in those areas. So the blue is limited business, which what your property is. There's certain things that are allowed in limited business that aren't allowed in the yellow one, which is residence. And parking levels are dictated in the zoning by law for each use. So the current use of limited business, limited business, there are things in there related to open space requirements, setback requirements, and other things that the site that you have on the corner of Starbury Hill Road would not be able to meet the current zoning and have the parking that you've added there.
Okay. I thought you meant the whole, like, three, one spot to three people. That's not what you're talking about. You're talking about more like reducing the minimum open space. Okay, I mean, that stuff is, that stuff is like fixable.
Well, but if you look at the site that you have, and if it, and there are certain things like setbacks, how far you have to be from the right of way, and a certain amount of open space you need to have on your property. If you consume the entire property with a parking lot, which you have in the orange there,
Yeah.
it doesn't meet those things.
Okay.
So our choices are to either enforce the zoning bylaws or work with you to change the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
And what I'm here tonight to talk to the board about is, you know, we can make changes to the zoning bylaws, which would affect not just you, but other people that are in that limited business district.
Right.
Do you want us to do that? And before we go through the amount of work that that would take, and how that would be prioritized amongst the other things that we're doing, I want to also mention that even if we change the zoning, there may be concerns about you being able to use the site the way that you want to because of the zone, this, the site doesn't have space for as much septic as you probably, you probably want to have hundreds of people there, and it just isn't big enough. Unless the site, so that's, that's a constraint.
Yeah, I understand, but, yeah, no, because it, like Heidi was saying, when the outside is full, the inside is not, or like, you know, you can have, if you have seventy-five seats, there might be actually more seats in the restaurant. You're not necessarily filling them all, but you can't like perfectly match the amount of number at a table, like, things get moved around, like, you, you know, you can't really like map, you can't only have seventy-five chairs. You know, like, you have to have more chairs because of how they're moved and where you need to, to put them. But, so, so I, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, to me, I'm just working on getting the amount of spots that we need for seventy-five seats. That, that, to me, is the issue. So, and, and I thought it was really just more the how many spots per person, but it seems like that's not really the issue. It's more about the other one that you had up there, like the, I'm sorry, I'm so not technical with any of this, but I'm just trying to like, just break it down. So reduce the minimum, so those things. So like, if, if, sorry, if we, if those things are doable, I don't even know if those things are doable. Just because I'm here in front of people, so I can't really make sense of stuff.
So-
Yeah. Like, that stuff seems like, that stuff seems, when I'm reading it, I'm like, well, that could be doable, couldn't it? You know?
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
How many parking spots do you think you need?
I mean, if they're, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, just tackling it from another end.
No, I, that's a fair question. I mean, if there's seventy, I mean, and not, to be honest, I'm not necessarily looking at us personally, like, any restaurant. If you have any restaurant that has the capacity for seventy-five people, how many spots do you need? I mean, yeah.
But I don't think that's helpful.
I think just fifty spots would alleviate the issue that we have. Even, even, yeah.
Fifty more or fifty total?
No, no, fifty total. We have thirty. No, we have, we have thirty now. Just even giving twenty more would just give that, that that breathing room. It's, it's, because people come in and out, and sometimes people are willing to wait, but thirty is just, it's just not enough.
Even on a business aspect, somebody goes in, you're like, oh, my gosh, your spot was so full. I just went home. I didn't want to-
Right.
Yeah. Like I said, you could have a party of ten and a few parties.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, David?
Yeah, so I would just, so what this board has to do, right, is to, if we're so inclined to do that, is to ask the town manager, to ask the planning department to come up with new rules, new zoning rules, which would allow you to park more cars.
Yes, I understand. We actually met with Julie Pearson also about that.
And for me, my, my colleagues here may have different things. For me, you know, I, I, first of all, I'd like to have a cooperative relationship, you know, I want you guys to be successful. And second of all, we may have questions about other things, which is perfectly legit, before we go and ask the planning department to stop what they're doing and to work on new zoning rules. Right? And, and so it's not separable, right? The, you know, and, and it, it, you know, to try to say that it is, it's not correct, right? So I think I've gotten the, the information that I, that I need tonight, right? So, but I don't know if everybody else has.
I'd like, I'd like to speak to the, to the cooperative nature of the relationship. I understand that there have been some heated words and hot heads in the past. Peter is, is a little bit of a hothead. I will absolutely say that, and I'm sure Natalie, his wife, will attest to that. He's very passionate about his business and about his people, and about people in general. He's also an unbelievable member of the community with, that gives incredible amount of philanthropy. The, the amount of giving that he and his twin brother do is, is, it's too much, frankly. As, as I, I've been brought on board, I've only been with them about a year. And I'm, I'm amazed at what they do for their local community. They're beloved. They have tried. And they have been met with a lot of resistance. And I will speak for myself. I know that I've been trying really hard to, to work with the town. And one of the things they said was, go before the zoning board again, present it to them. I said, okay. And I worked with, I worked with the town. I said, what do I need to do? They told me what I needed to do. I had stacks of information and all these forms and, and write-ups and everything else written up. They asked us to submit it to them so they could make changes. I did that. I submitted to them to make changes. We had people come to support us for the meeting. They did not even allow us to speak. So that, to me, is a contentious relationship on the, the side of the town, where I'm trying to work with them, and we're doing everything we can, and I, and I recognize that Peter can be hot. I said, Peter, just, I'll handle it. No worries. I've got, you know, I, I can stay calm. But then to, to have us jump through that many hoops and, and change it and update it and revise it, and then come and say, you're not even gonna be allowed to speak, I'm not sure that that's, I'm not sure how we're supposed to take that. I think that the cooperative relationship, frankly, with all due respect, goes both ways, David. I don't know you at all. I, I, this is the first time I've ever met you. I would love to work with, with the board. I would love it. If there's anything that we need to do to improve our restaurant, I've been, I've been talking with the twins. That's why we have these plans in place. We need to update our kitchen. We need to get the hood, a, a bigger hood. We are doing all of that. I will give you the names of the, of the hood company, of the general contractor, Ken Bedrosian. I have everything documented in email, and I have been submitting it to the town. The town is well aware. If there's anything else that we need to do so that we don't have the threat of losing our liquor license, I would love to know so that I can make sure that it happens before the end of the year. I'm willing to work with this town. I'm willing to do whatever it takes, and they are too. Peter is, is passionate. I just ask you to understand that. This is his livelihood without this. This is what they work to build up.
Mr. Chair, may I say one more thing?
David, then Fran.
So I, I, I agree. It's, it's a two-way street. I, I can't account for the, the Zoning Board of Appeals. They're, they're their own body, right? They can, they, they, they follow state law and our, our zoning laws, right? And so I, I don't, I don't, I was, I didn't watch that meeting. I don't know. So in, in our, our case, in my personal case, all the communication that I have seen is accused me of something, right, or accused this board of something. So, you know, but I, I definitely, I want Rapsgalian to be successful. I'm very happy to have Rapsgalian here. I, I, you know, it, I'd just rather work together than be accused of things. That's, that's all I'm saying.
And that's perfectly understandable, and I would ask that that be a two-way street. I'm so happy to reset the relationship, truly, truly. I am happy to reset the relationship and have open communication, and give you the information you need and share information. I'm so happy to do that.
And if I could just add, I am the liaison to the, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I was at both meetings. And they operate under a really stringent, they have no leeway whatsoever. And I think in both times, nothing had changed the second time. So I think they made their decisions based on, on their bylaws. So the variance bylaws.
Thank you for that, Fran.
Jim? Um, I've been trying to find my way through this. It's complicated.
Yeah.
But here's some things I noticed. The, the town staff is, is driven in different directions, okay? So we have, you know, you know, business development. There's, there she is. There's Julie working away on that, trying to figure out how to help what, what you need to do. And we have, and we have the Board of Health and the Planning Board that are trying to enforce laws and seeing that laws are being broken. So that's why it comes to us, because we're, we're supposed to be able to, you know, find, find the right place to slice the baby.
Sure.
It's not easy.
No, I'm sure it's not.
The one, one path that hasn't been presented to you yet that you may want to know about is that sometimes zoning bylaws are changed just by the vote of town meeting, not because town staff prepares something. It's tricky, because often there are unintended consequences. Often, you might, you know, if we, if you went through that slide, which you should get a copy of, definitely, that's all the little things that need to, might need to change, and you hired someone to help you figure out how to propose those changes, people, you know, people might well come forward at town meeting and say, well, you know, in my neighborhood, what that would cause is, you know, way too much parking, or, you know, whatever. There would be a dialogue, but at least it would be a dialogue. It would be a vote, and it would be settled. So that's a possible way forward for you if you need something quick. Because I don't see an appetite in the board for making changes to the limited business zoning district to accommodate one business. I mean, the alternative, so one alternative, it seems like that's being presented, is just say that it's okay. In effect, that's happening, in that for a while, you were being fined for illegally parking too many cars. Then that stopped.
We closed, we closed the law.
You closed the parking. You had the ZBA hearing, which was very distressing, and then the parking got opened up again.
We opened the parking the day after Kevin Shaw was killed.
Yeah.
So, and we, and I, Peter opened it, and I cannot blame him for that. I'm the one that asked him to close it so that we could be in compliance with, with what the town requested, but that was, that was hard.
Yeah, I get that. And I, I, I wanted to appreciate your honesty about the dynamics here, and how, you know, Peter's passion can sometimes result in, you know, what looks to us like a wave of blaming and anger. So, and I, and I think it's a brilliant strategy, and a correct one, to, you know, to have, have you be the voice here. So, thank you. It's hard to be honest about that, and I really appreciate it. The thoughts I had. I think that's basically it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
David.
The town, the town meeting is in May, correct?
Yeah.
April or May?
Um, yeah, so I, I was wondering if the, the town manager had an idea of, you know, how much I look at the zoning, you know, what kind of staff time that would take? E- either for, um, you know, I, I don't know, the, um, the planners are much better at, um, figuring out what we might be done with zoning laws than I would be.
So we've been discussing this for, for a while, uh, you know, uh, different things that we could do. Um, it depends on the scope. If we're talking about, you know, where that, the end of that arrow is, it's different than if we're talking about inside the red box, um, which is a bigger conversation. So I think that's, that's the first thing. And the second thing is, you know, some of these are, are pretty big, um, and do we want to do them all, or do we want to do a couple of them and see if it's enough to allow them to use the parking that they added? Uh, again, so it's, it's a, in terms of hours of work, it's, it's, we're currently, I can't give you an exact estimate, but there would have to be some work done, the planning board would have to review it, it'd have to be a public hearing of the planning board, which is typical for any zoning, uh, change, and, uh, it would go to town meeting in May. Um, so it would, it would just have to, we'd have to just set some other things aside a little bit, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be that, that over-consuming.
And, um, would, would that include maybe a, um, a determination as to whether the, um, the limited district, limited business district is appropriate for this parcel?
So we talked about that, is there an overlay we can create for uses like this, uh, which would give it different rules than everyone else in the blue, for example?
Okay.
Uh, and that, that is an idea, uh, it's, it's a way to target the changes, but it also, as I think someone mentioned, has unintended consequences that we'd want to work through.
So I, I, I would be interested in, you know, getting some recommendation from the, the planners, I mean, I'm not, I, I wouldn't ask it from my point of view, right? Not, not asking for an enormous amount of work, but, you know, um, and, and, you know, an informed recommendation by people who know the zoning bylaw, like the back of their hands. So, uh, I, I, I think that's, that's worth, uh, doing. I mean, we're, and what, what Jim mentioned is that, you know, you could, um, bring something to town meeting yourself, um, that is, it definitely is possible, but if the, the various boards in town don't support that, it doesn't, it's not likely to pass, right? And so then you just wasted your time. It's, it's, if we can figure out how to do this in a way that, you know, um, the, the planning board approves and, um, et cetera, it's, it's a, it's more likely to pass down.
Sure.
Thank you, David.
It's more like, so that, that's great, I love the, the planning and, I guess, to me, it's more like, so what do we do from here, like, we're happy to meet monthly, or meet, you know, like, I'm just wondering how we kind of keep this going, and I'm kind of getting names from here, or who we communicate with, or, you know, because I, I am happy to help Heidi, too, we've kind of like formed a little team here, and so, um, just want to throw that out there, like, who exactly should, after this, like, in the next couple of days, who do we kind of get in touch with and be like, all right, so, do you know what I mean?
Okay, thank you. So, um, a couple of thoughts that I've got moving forward. Um, I'll certainly make sure that, you know, we don't want to talk about septic anymore, but it's still there. Make sure that, and I'll ask the manager to check with our health director, to appraise us as to what kind of progress being made on that. I think, you know, that, that would be one nice thing to get out of the way and not worry about, and, you know, if we all understand that the problems of construction, and especially construction in New England in the winter, so I think, you know, we can certainly be understanding in that regard. Um, you know, I, I would be okay with David's recommendation about having the planning department come up with some ideas. Um, I'm a little skeptical of the idea about, you know, about a backwards way of trying to spot zone just five Strawberry Hill Road. I think any kind of zoning changes would be applicable to everybody in the limited business district. And I don't know if you were here when we were talking earlier about lighting along Great Road, but, um, people back then, when they were looking at street lighting, they wanted, well, we want to make this place look very rustic and rural. And the same sort of ideas were very much in play when they approved the zoning for that area. I mean, it's, you know, probably thirty years ago they did that. Attitudes have to change. It takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting to get zoning changed, and, you know, some very innocuous issues, um, get voted down. Uh, one that I was involved in on a couple of occasions, just attempting to put in drive-up windows for pharmacies, um, repeatedly got voted down, got a majority but didn't get the two-thirds. So I think you really need to make sure that, that between you folks and hopefully your attorney and our planning department, that you can get a really compelling case together. Um, and I, I think probably as far as the, the person to contact directly about the next steps, I, I would put it, suggest you contact the town manager directly, and then, you know, depending upon the nature of the question, you can kind of point it down into the individual department that suits you.
We have, um, you know, Julie Pierce has really taken the lead on helping businesses. I know they sent you this slide presentation earlier today, and we've been trying to do everything we can to, to keep you, uh, engaged. Um, John Mangiari, hey, where's my tag? I don't know what happened to my tag. Uh, John Mangiari, um, town manager. Julie Pierce would be the one to continue to reaching out to, and, and where, you know, we've have been and continue to be committed to finding ways to make this work. Uh, we just have to follow the laws of the, that the people voted thirty years ago, or whenever it happened, and that's what we're bound by.
Okay, and the comments from the members of the board? Jim?
Um, I, I was, I was surprised and pleased about the openness to having the planning department do some work, uh, you know, and I, I hope they can, they can do something. I think that's a fine direction for us to go in. Uh, of the various changes that I saw here, the ones that, um, you know, set my hackles up were reducing the minimum open space requirement and reducing landscape buffers, um, but, you know, I think we'd still have to see what that actually means before we, you know, understand whether it makes sense. Um, yeah, so I, I, I think, um, you know, this, 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 this is a, you know, a better, probably a better way forward than having you guys write your own zoning bylaws. That's, that's a pretty low success rate at town meeting.
Thank you. David?
I, I agree that, you know, we, we don't want to get into spot zoning, but I, I do think that, um, uh, it is worthwhile to assess whether this parcel was properly zoned, right? Everything that's in limited business is not the same, right? There are, there are shopping centers in limited business, and there's this business in limited business, and this business is, you know, something that used to be a residence, right? You know, in the dim and distant past. Um, and it, you know, it's a different kind, it's a small parcel, right? You know, it's a different kind of parcel than we have for big shopping centers. So I, I think it's worth understanding whether it's zoned properly, and, you know, um, or, you know, when it, when it was originally zoned, did we choose the right, um, zoning district? Anyway, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I think we've talked that one to death. Oh, man.
Um, I would, I would like John to use Julie and the EDC for this problem, and we should do the whole, instead, to avoid spot zoning, we should do all of the limited businesses. And as a, and as a, as, and aside, um, Roach Brothers was, uh, under a, uh, board of health, uh, permit thing, went before we got to sewers, and, um, they were continued, allowed to continue business, and we didn't take any of their permits away. And I, I don't think that if they're, if they are working on their septic systems, we should even think about taking their liquor license away. That's just, you know.
Thank you. I believe we have a couple of people online. Matt, can you let some in?
Of course, Mr. Chair, first up is Karen Watkins. Karen, you should be able to speak.
Hi, this is Karen Ruth Watkins from Strawberry Hill Road. First, I just want to say thank you to Rep Scallion for being such a great neighbor. Um, I, I mean, you're an incredible resource for the community, and when we had those huge snowstorms in March of 2017, you, you, we were electricity refugees, and, and you guys gave us warm meals. And the same thing during COVID, I mean, your creativity in creating open space where people could meet outside, um, was so deeply appreciated. And Acton is an incredible place, we have really great town leadership, um, and I just hope that we, um, as a community can be as creative as you folks have been as a business. And, and in terms of that creativity, I hope that you can look at your list of people who signed your petition as a resource, because, you know, people, a lot of those people might have ideas. Um, the open space requirement, I mean, it's tough when you have such a small lot, but maybe you can tap all the gardeners in Acton to find a way to layer plants, or, or, or do what, you know, maybe we could do something like what happens in Singapore, where space is very limited, but people build green walls. Um, you know, maybe that could be part of us, you know, a way of addressing the setback. It, it just seems as though we want, you know, a business that's as, as successful and creative and, um, as, and, as important and emotional resource for the community should get our support and our creativity to help make this work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is Tara. She'll be able to speak.
Hi there, yes, Tara, um, I'm no fan of people disobeying the bylaws or septic rules, but I agree with Ann that to suggest, even bring it up about their liquor license when they're working so hard to solve their septic, um, I think it's, it's very sad to me. I'm glad they are working with the board health, because the select board has no purview over that. Please take care of that as soon as possible, if you don't want to be caught up in the political goal to sewer Great Road, which could be much more expensive than septic. Relative to zoning, um, under the table of standard dimensional regulations, um, there, and other chapters in the zoning bylaw, there can be notes that could allow a special permit. For example, if there's a, uh, special permit by the select board, approval of a special permit, and that way it would be case by case, as opposed to allowing everybody in limited business to do something. Um, anyway, once you get the septic approved, you'll know how many seats will be allowed, and the concern about water quality will be more easily discredited from the number of parking spots. Thirty-eight Weatherbeat came on its own and adopted nearby zoning, that they hired their own land use engineer and lawyer, it took them a couple of years, but they did it. It's my understanding that, uh, per state law, if you submit a petition, the landowner submits a petition to change their own zoning, um, that the, you have to check with a, a land use lawyer on this, but it's my understanding that it goes into effect until it's voted down at town meeting or up. Uh, you can bring a petition at town meeting with ten signatures in January when the, um, the, what they call the warrant is open, that's a period of time when the warrant is open, it's only ten signatures. Um, I love that the town is working with this landowner to figure out a solution, and I would certainly love the town manager to advocate for land preservation zoning fixes with the same vigor as he's advocating for this one business. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Carol is our next speaker, she should be able to speak.
Okay.
Carol, you're on.
Okay, as a resident at sixty Strawberry Hill Road who drives by Rep Scallion several times a day, I've been impressed with the creativity of Rep Scallion at using unused land for parking in light of the lack of other safe parking. What about, I thought I heard you say that they weren't enforcing this, um, violation now, and I'm wondering if there could be some kind of, at least temporary, formal lack of enforcement, so that they're not looking over their shoulder, is enforcement going to come back? Like, perhaps during these dark months, until we turn the clocks ahead, or until town meeting, or until there's an opportunity to rectify the situation, could there be some short-term, um, temporary not enforcement, so that during the dark months, people don't have to walk across the street? Maybe in April, when it's lighter, it's not as dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else, Matt?
Tara, no more hands, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, so, item eight, Acton Community Housing Corporation requests for approval of affordable housing funds, Mr. Manager?
This is a request to authorize the amount stated in the memo in the packet, uh, as a contribution to the McManus Manor Affordable Housing, uh, project that's being, uh, constructed by the AHA. Um, the chair of the ACHC provided a memo with the request detailing, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I, I have no questions, I believe that we need a motion to approve this expenditure of the funds. I have a motion.
Does it need specific word, wording? Or just, I, I move to allow the ACHC, um, to, uh, spend, uh, I think it's $200,000, on the McManus Senior Housing Project.
Okay. Motion, I have it seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm so glad the ACHC is willing to do this, it's great support for the project.
Great. Great, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, okay, approved. Uh, item nine, Potential Community Preservation Act applications, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. So, in the packet, I hope, if not, um, I can provide it afterwards, is a list of projects that, uh, we have been considering at the staff level to bring forward for consideration by the CPC. I can read that list, and my goal of this, uh, discussion tonight is to make sure that none of these are, um, problematic for the board, uh, with the understanding that we welcome your input, um, and, uh, would, would move forward, move towards finalizing them, uh, when they're due, I think this week, as we discussed earlier. So, would you like me to go through the list? Uh, so the first is, uh, Woodlawn Cemetery, we're looking to make some improvements to the gates out there, um, and the walls, so we need to do a design to make sure we do that in a historically accurate way. Second is the West Acton Citizens Library, we'd like to do some design work to understand what we can do to make that building more accessible, based on some of the ADA transition, um, suggestions that were made. Third item is the building across the street from that, which would be the old fire station, which I believe is called the Windsor Building. That was a big CPA project about ten years ago, and we need to make some additional, uh, preservation measures to that building to keep it going. Uh, the next item is the Morrison Farm Building, there is a barn and a house on that property that, um, have historic value and are contributing to the character of the district, and so this goal, the, this project would be to design, um, preservation measures to allow those buildings to be used in the future. They're currently not being used at all, or to a very limited extent. Uh, another item is historic residential markers that the Historic Commission would like to, uh, give out as part of a new program. Another one is the library, the Memorial Library, we, it went out to bid to re-point all the masonry, it's original, I believe, or very old if not, and needs to be, uh, restored, and since it's a historic building, we have to do it with a preservation technique. The bids, because of the bidding climate these days, came in over what we had available, so we're seeking seventy thousand more, so we're So we're seeking 70,000 more so we're able to complete the project. It is an important historic preservation project. The next item is the, along those same lines, the masonry work of the Isaac Davis Monument. We'd like to look at that and make sure that it's in tip-top shape, uh, leading up to the, some of the celebrations that we'll be having in a few years. Uh, and there's also some other monuments on the common that could use some attention. So that's another project. The next one is 468 Main Street, which is the red house next door. Um, exterior repairs, that's an historic building. Uh, here's an interesting one. You know the historic plow that you walk by when you come in the building? Uh, unless you take the elevator? Uh, we'd like to see what we can do to, um, make sure that that is, uh, looking good and is properly preserved as we plan to, um, some festivities in the coming years. Next item is our annual, uh, contract with the Regional Housing Services Office. Uh, the next project is, so we have a lot of conservation restrictions, and those require work to maintain and to make sure that, um, they're being cared for properly. One thing we need to do is set granite bounds so that people know the extent to where the land is being restricted. We also need, need to do some meadow preservation work. So the next two, or this item is to, uh, provide funding to do that. The next one is Camp Acton Conservation Land. Uh, we'd like to regrade and replace the culvert and install a new gate. And then the Jenks Culvert Replacement Project is also, uh, something we're considering requesting. And finally, a new boardwalk, uh, for the Narrow Pond, which is more than 20 years old, and it needs to be repaired for both accessibility, safety, and aesthetic reasons. Or that's more, you know, many reasons.
Thank you.
And actually, one other item that just came in earlier is the Cemetery Commission, I believe, is planning to submit an application to do some work to design an accessible exterior entranceway to the Woodlawn Chapel.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll open it to the board. Uh, two questions. One is, um, I, I believe that there is a, uh, some discussion about a state earmark towards its bridge boardwalk. Is that still in play or?
Yes, I'm hesitant to announce it until it's signed by the governor, but, um, our, our state delegation, Senator Eldredge in particular, worked hard to get $200,000 in the economic development, um, well, or program that's, that the governor, I think, is, hopefully, will see soon. Uh, $200,000 is two-thirds of the cost of that project, which would make a significant contribution and, and allow us to move forward next year, hopefully with some, some additional support from CPA.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the other observation, it's like about the Davis Plow. I believe if you take a look at the, uh, at the case, there's two small American flags there on the case, and, uh, those are 48-star flags. So I don't know why we're moving ahead so quickly on redoing it. I, I have no questions or objections to any of this. I'll open it to my colleagues.
I guess I wanted to get the sense of the board about, um, Morrison Farm work, because that's been a, um, a place where, you know, ideas go to die, uh, in Acton, um, partly because of the way that the, um, you know, some of the early study committees had, um, you know, different, uh, constituencies, uh, working on them. And, uh, you know, once you get more than two constituencies who want different things, you never get a majority. So, uh, and I think we still don't have an overall vision or plan for what happens with Morrison Farm's site. Um, so I, I, I think this is a good idea, a good project, but it just seemed a, an opportunity to just make sure the board was comfortable with proceeding with work to restore a, a house or at least study restoring a house, uh, you know, in a context where, you know, there were, there were, there were committees proposing that we, you know, tear down the house. So it's, I, I, I just find this whole thing a political minefield, and I just want to make sure we weren't, we weren't setting ourselves up for another, uh, failure.
Isn't Asa Parlin where design ideas go to die? No, I'm, I'm just kidding. As far as Mars and Farm, I, um, let me finish reading this. But I did drive by, and I noticed, you know, the little outside paint is starting to, to, I just wondered what the extent of the work was, if you had an idea.
It's really to bring in a professional to, to lay that out for us. I mean, I, I was in the building actually last week or not too, not too long ago. The inside is fine. It's not, it's not falling apart like, like Asa Parlin was. Uh, but the exterior is going to continue to degrade unless we take some preservation measures. And then the barn, the barn is a, needs some work on the exterior and maybe a double checking of what's needed on the interior to allow us to, to use that, because right now, we're not really using it that, that well, if we're using it at all.
It's not a, a place where folks walk and walk their dogs. I think, uh, updating, you know, maintenance on the building is important.
David?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I support all these things, and I'm very happy to see all the historic things that are suggested, because some years there's a, a dearth of, uh, historic, uh, requests. Yeah, I actually had the, um, Morrison Farm House on my potential goal list for a couple of years, and I haven't had it recently. I mean, it really bothers me to have that house there empty, just deteriorating. Uh, you know, uh, the Morrison Farm, um, committee was not successful in coming up with the use, um, you know, maybe we can discuss it as far as our goal setting next year, but I, I think it's going to require the select board, if we want to do something with that house, it's going to require the select board to make a decision as to what we want to do and then propose that to town. If it's necess, you know, so there's some things that we can just do, and there are other things that require, you know, confirmation by town meeting. But depending on what we propose, you know, I could get that in, in town meeting. But I, you know, I would rather have, you know, uh, we, we rent it to a family, you know, fix it up enough to rent it to a family. And why should there be an empty, an empty house there, right? Uh, we can maintain the historic character, and someone can live there. We can maintain the historic character and maybe turn it into museum. There's a, there's a lot of potential things. We just have to choose one. And, and like, like you said, Jim, there's going to be some people who are against anything. We, we just have to kind of try to build as much consensus as we can.
Thank you. Um, yes, I also support all of these. Just a quick question. Um, in terms of, um, the number of requests we've got versus the money we've had, we have, um, can we get an update on that? Has anyone done the math on, like, the total funding request and how much we can allocate?
Well, we're, we're still receiving, um, applications. So we won't know for about another week what's coming in, not only from the town but through other, uh, agencies. The, uh, this is a fairly modest list of requests, especially when you keep in mind that, uh, there was a pretty significant allocation proposed under CPC last year for historic preservation of the Asa Parlin House, which was not expended, uh, was not approved. So, um, we're well below our 5% requirement we're spending on historic preservation, so I think this would, would eat up a bit of that anyway. And I think, you know, obviously, there's going to be some, some requests for, uh, for open space purchasing, as we discussed. And there'll certainly be quite a bit for affordable housing coming up. But, uh, most of these are actually fairly small dollars. But probably at our next meeting, I think I can probably provide a, a breakdown after we have all the applications in. David?
Yes, usually sometime in the late winter, early spring, we prioritize the, the towns list after all of them are in.
That's correct.
Uh, because this, the CPC usually wants some input on, uh, from the select board. Thanks.
Okay, um, I think, I think you've got our approval on all of this, John, to, uh, move ahead with these applications.
Uh, thank you, with the understanding that some of these numbers may, um, are not final, but this is generally where we're headed, and I appreciate the support. I guess one other question, do you want the plow to be back up here? Isn't this where it used to be?
It, years ago, it was up here. And we actually moved it downstairs to make it more accessible to the public. So I think we could certainly have a good discussion about that. It was more public area, so. Subject for further discussion, I guess. All right, um, we're down to the consent items. Item 10, approved meeting minutes, October 3rd, 2022. Item 11, approved executive session minutes, October 3rd, 2022. Item 12, accept gift recreation apartment for $291 from anonymous donors towards the Acton Dog Park. Item 13, accept gift recreation apartment for $10 from Benjamin and Andrea Kravitt toward the Acton Dog Park. Item 14, accept gift recreation department for $100 from David Baxter and Anne Anderson towards the Acton Dog Park. Item 15, appoint Bill Clower, Steve Trimble, Dave Lunger, Amlyn Lynn, and Robert Ferrara as full members to the 250 Committee terms to expire September 30th, 2026. Item 16, request for refund on building permit, building division. All right, so, I have a motion to accept consent items 10 through 15 inclusive. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of accepting those items, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Jim, to your question.
Yeah, this may just be ques- Sorry, this, these may just be questions, but, um, you know, the per, the person who, uh, prepared this for our, uh, you know, for our looking through, um, took their highlight pen and highlighted, uh, point number 12, which is, "Permit fees are not reimbursable, not transferable, nor does payment guarantee issuance of a building permit." Um, so, you know, so I got a little confused about why it's suddenly okay for us to do this. I do get the, the situation. I mean, it's, it's awful, you know? You, you, you put, you put a bid in on a job, the customer says, oh, that sounds good. Then you can't get the part, and then it takes months and months, and you finally get the part, you go back to the customer, and the customer says, oh, no, we don't, we don't want to do this anymore. And you've already paid this, you know, this permit fee. So I get the case for, for, for returning it. Um, I, I did wonder whether, in other permit fee reimbursements, we've attempted to get some guidance from staff on whether time has already been taken, uh, in the preparation or dealing with the permit? And I wondered, uh, if John had any guidance about whether this particular permit had actually taken any work or not.
Uh, so, yes, to your question, um, I talked, I spoke with Commissioner Tom Moeburg, and they did do some review and, um, what they normally do with a permit like this, uh, which is staff time to process and review. Um, so even though they didn't go out and do inspections, they did a lot of the stuff that they do at the beginning of the permitting process.
Yeah, so that, that's what I'd be, I'd be inclined, if we can come up with a reasonable number reasonably quickly, to refund most of this, but not all of it, uh, to pay attention to the fact that we, you know, that we did, we did, you know, spend staff time on it.
Yeah, I completely agree, and I was going to hold, hold this myself, um, that, uh, you know, I would like to see, uh, you know, my understanding is that the applicant wanted to withdraw the permit, but, but we don't have a recommendation from, um, staff. We don't have, or as Jim was proposing, you know, kind of a prorated, um, uh, fee. I, I'm not, on the surface, I would vote no for this. Um, but if there's a, either a recommendation from staff or, um, uh, you know, uh, kind of a policy as to what we do here, then, but, you know, then that, that highlighted thing that, that Jim read, that's, you know, once we sit the president, that's totally out the window, right? It's, you know, this is completely not refundable unless we vote to refund. So, um, so I, I would be happy voting no or, or bring, bring this back in.
Guess I call out a motion, do you? Get a second?
Yeah, I, I move to take no action on item 16.
Move and second, take no action on item?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. So.
Call for opposed?
No. No action. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. unanimous to take no action on this request.
Well, my understanding of the difference between no and no action is no, it's done. No action, it could be brought back.
I'm looking for one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
Get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor to adjourn at, uh, well, my watch says 9:25. The clock says 10:25.
Who knows? Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.